The Charter Township of Oxford Planning Commission Regular Meeting Thursday, February twenty seventh, twenty twenty five. If we could start by raising, standing and paying respects to the flag.
And placing the flag on United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Number three, if we could note the role.
Noted, there is a quorum.
Number four, approval of tonight's agenda? Get a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number five, conflict of interest, ex parte contact. Does anybody have anything they need to discuss or report tonight? Seeing none. Number six, approval of the minutes, Planning Commission Regular Meeting, February thirteenth, twenty twenty five?
Motion for approval of the minutes, Planning Commission Regular Meeting, February thirteenth, twenty twenty five.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number seven, public comment on items not scheduled for public hearing or on this agenda? Seeing no public. We'll move to number eight, Commissioners' comments, if anybody has anything they would like to address or discuss? Okay, seeing nothing. Move to number nine, unfinished business, master plan update?
Good evening, Planning Commissioners, my name is Megan Mastin-Middock, I'm a principal with Carlisle Workman Associates and a colleague of Mateo Pascalacqua. I, I've been involved with the master plan from its beginning and had helped with the steering committee that had done the public engagement. And then tonight Mateo had some personal business that I felt like I could handle this meeting on my own and then we could go from there. You have, you received an electronic copy of it last week. Ideally, we'd have gotten that to you a week earlier, there were some hiccups even getting you there. So what we would offer is that this is the first of three work sessions on this draft if you want. So I know that you all got hard copies tonight and may wanna spend some time with those and mark them up. Mateo is here every Tuesday and Thursday. If you could give us a commitment that within the next week you would get us any handwritten edits, that would be, that would be helpful. And then if we could turn those back around to have that as part of something to you for your last meeting in March. Our only commitment at this point is to get something to the Township Board by April. We had sent you a memo also in your packet asking a couple of questions. What we've done over the process of this master plan, and I know we have four new Planning Commissioners who haven't been with, been on the Planning Commission during that whole time, is there were a number of things that the Planning Commission hadn't seen before. But what we've done over the, over the course of the last year is brought different sections for the Planning Commission to look at, bless, and then we put them all in this final draft that's before you tonight. So we had some very specific questions about the future land use chapter because that chapter, and that's on page fifty two, has some guiding factors that are from the current master plan. And then we updated the text on the urban service areas and the roadway capacity, the reclamation of extractive sites before we got into the future land use descriptions. And we wanted to make sure that that provided clear guidance on future land use decisions. So I wanted to start there with discussions of this, this is the only agenda item for tonight, we can do what works best and is most effective for you. So, but that was the leading question and I will not be offended if you start off and go someplace else.
You wanna just start and go down a line or?
Well, she had a leading question, right, what was your?
My leading question was that future land use chapter, pages fifty two to seventy six, do those provide clear guidance on future land use decisions?
Okay.
And then are there any changes needed?
I think they do.
Yeah, as I read through, it could seem to make sense to me. It spelled out pretty clearly. Somebody's have only had this problem for a few weeks, right?
Yeah.
It's been.
So I think, yeah, on page fifty two, you talk about guiding factors, but we don't, we talk about proximity to the village of Oxford, but we don't talk about proximity to mixed land use areas. Because you could have high density housing, because you, because it talks about having a high density housing close to the village and then it, then it's supposed to taper off everywhere else except for the mixed use areas.
Except for those mixed use areas, yeah.
So that might be a bullet or an addition, at least call that out as part of one of the guiding factors.
So that the high density is close to the village?
Yeah, but basically it's the proximity to the, to the mixed use areas.
Okay. So we would maybe add something on page fifty two to that guiding factor and then on page fifty five, add a bit more to that paragraph of, under the proximity, okay. All right, so I'm generally seeing nods from folks that as decision makers, reading this chapter, it gave you a good concept of what your decision making parameters would be and good guidance.
I think so.
What about the, what about the leapfrogging thing?
It just, this, the transition, I just, I don't, I really don't understand that. So if you could help me understand that a little bit more?
Leapfrogging in terms of utilities?
Yeah, it says in, in order to maintain ordinance development, township decision making should only span, it's on fifty three at the last paragraph. It basically, you know, it, it just, it just abruptly ends, I don't know if they, like, I didn't understand it, so like, I guess I, I had to look it up.
Okay. So be more descriptive about leapfrogging, so basically it's that the city does, the township doesn't wanna extend utilities?
Yeah, it just stops, maybe it just doesn't explain it, like, so somebody's gonna ask a billion questions about it.
Okay. Thanks.
I'm just looking through my notes, sorry.
No, that's fine. I'm, I'm good enough with silences.
I don't wanna be too picky, so when it comes to stuff, but stuff that I don't understand, I will say so.
I'll go back then to a previous topic that discussed with retail last time on page forty nine, the water system. This is, the water district is currently in good condition. What does that mean? We have lots of capacity for new people, we, it's brand new, it'll last another thousand years, what does that mean, it's just a platitudes.
Okay, we'll go, we'll go back to the Township Engineer and get more clarification on that.
Something more qualitative as, as opposed to just being, you know, the sky is blue. Looks nice.
Okay, thanks. Our other questions were, our next question was specifically about the open space and greenways plan on seventy to seventy two. And to me, after spending a lot of time with this document, the map on page seventy two, to me, seemed to be the most helpful in guiding where future development should be, since it's identified, it's basically the areas that are in white are the areas where there would be availability for development. If you're looking to protect agriculture, protect natural features. And then it has the, we kept, as it had been before, we kept that safety path system and trail system over it. But I know for the Planning Commission, protection of natural features and woodlands has been a much more in-depth discussion and there's lots more concerns that have come from the public in this master plan round than there had been previously.
Did you happen to meet with the safety path committee today?
Mateo did and then we got updated from Supervisor Curtis, we got an updated map that was done by Jim Sharp. So they identified, I think, seventeen different segments for the safety path of master plan. And that way we put those as a low priority or high priority and the splitting them in half. So we would update this map according to the, according to that.
They're still gonna do the low and high priorities on that? I thought, I thought we learned. But, okay, I.
We can, we can figure that out, they have them listed one through seventeen.
But that's, yeah, but those are the priorities within the safety path committee itself, we weren't, we weren't gonna make those part of this document.
Right, so we could just identify all of them, we could identify them as high priority or low priority, those are the two choices.
Or, or you just have a picture of the proposed, here's the overall what the master plan looks like.
Yeah.
And just, and just do that.
And no priorities.
And no priority.
Okay.
Because, yeah, it doesn't make sense from a safety path standpoint, we don't look at them that way from, this group is low priority, this group is high priority. We try to prioritize the whole thing.
Okay.
You know, one through N.
Well, that was where I was headed here because two weeks ago, when we approved the nursing center, it had a safety path across the front. Which was approved. But there are two side streets and they said they did not wanna put safety paths in, that they would pay for those. Now, are we still gonna let that go on? That means that we're gonna have mixture of safety paths, no safety paths. And we talk about that a little bit here about things being sort of disjointed today with respect to safety paths.
Yeah, that's exactly what they're trying to do within that committee is to remove that disjointness and, and not have these safety paths go to nowhere.
Okay.
Right?
So should we say something about that in this document? That we're not going to accept payment in lieu of safety paths?
Would not say that, at this point, we haven't figured out how we're gonna handle, how do you make it fair for developers who have to put in safety paths and tho, and those that don't? Should everybody pay, should just some folks pay and do it? So that's something we need to, we need to resolve in terms of the way we establish the ordinance. Right now, the ordinance says everybody must do it, either must pay or put in a safety path. So we're gonna, we're gonna revisit that and do what makes sense.
And I know the plan was, or the way we've talked a lot is to do away with, or somewhat do away with the pay in lieu of, because we want the safety path. But there will be case by case situations like the senior center over there because there's gonna be two areas that are gonna be developed down the road. If we may not put the safety path in, when that gets developed, it's just gonna get torn out during construction.
Wouldn't it be better to take those funds that they pay off and put in a high interest, or a high interest making fund? And then use that money to either put new safety paths in for people or if that safety path needs to be done, then they would actually do it. So instead of having the, the people that own the property put it in, no, they should pay the township and then we put it in.
They do pay the township.
Yeah, what I'm saying is, but they normally would put it in if they're doing a new, new development. Like if that, if that community right now wants some of those safety paths in, they could do that, but they choose to pay instead. So what we should do is, we should have the contractors or the homeowners pay the township and then have them do the safety path. So that way we can actually make money on this stuff and then eventually use it as cash flow and then we can put safety paths in throughout all Oxford.
Yeah, I would, would argue that construction costs has gone a lot faster than.
Yeah, but you're taking, well, I mean, that's the investment part.
Even lose money on that along, but at least on, if you look at it between now and the last two years.
Yeah, well, I mean, everything's one of the stress, so.
The factors of development, we're having to tear out a, a, a safety path that developer put in twenty years ago because it fell into disrepair and it's gonna cost twenty times more, or ten times more than what it originally cost.
It's a good thing you know somebody that does pathways.
And Mr. Turner, to answer your question, the mechanism on whether people can pay in lieu for a safety path or whatnot, that doesn't need to be specified in the master plan because the master plan is such a big picture document. You can, you don't have to have that specificity of policy choices here.
That was gonna be kind of my comment, because the master plan is a guide for this commission to use when, when approving plans, right? And right now, I mean, it's, it's sort of a question that I have, but it's also a comment. We voted on that last week, one of the things to vote on was that very thing. So if we don't like the idea of them not putting a safety path in, then we would not vote for them to pay in lieu.
I agree.
And I think the option, the flexibility there is probably more optimal. But as far as this document goes, we can spell out what we prefer and then that way as a guiding thing for the next five years, we're all on the same page as to what the original intent of the master plan was, right? So.
So.
I'm sure that satisfies everybody.
Just from what I'm hearing, in terms of changes to the safety path portion, so on page sixty six, that table will be updated with the thirteen priority paths that are identified by the safety path plan that was agreed upon today. We'll take out the priority column on table seven and then we'll update the map on page sixty seven. So it just shows the priority segments and it does not differentiate by color between low and high priority.
So on those segments, and folks will be able to infer by the number of those segments, which are the high and which are the low priority. Because they won't, they are numbered one through seventeen and number one is the high priority.
Yeah, well, and I, I think.
Seventeen is the low priority.
I think what we do in, in this document.
But that's okay.
Instead of putting one, two, one, one through thirteen.
Yeah.
We'll just put them in that order in the table and.
It's fine, it's fine.
Yeah, okay.
Just so I'm clear, why, why are we, why does there no priority on it, they're all, you're saying they're all prioritized?
They're prioritized at the committee level, we don't prioritize them as high and low at for this document.
Okay, I got you.
Because there may be instances that come up, such as the priority path by the high school, where when you originally looked at this, circumstances changed and also a funding, funding changed where instead of doing priority one, it was, it was expedient at the time to do what was maybe marked as priority five. And so don't wanna necessarily shackle yourself in a plan to say we're, we have to do, somebody might say, oh, you can't do five because you have one, two, three, and four ahead of it.
Okay, so, so is that the clarification then? We don't wanna spell it out here in prior, in a priority list because it would be viewed as skipping priorities to, to move things around?
Yeah.
When in reality, it's just how things play out.
Yeah.
Okay.
Understood, thank you.
And then also where we're in this area, the plan, I think, before the meeting, a number of people had said that map fourteen, the potential natural areas map, that could be crisper, we'll definitely take that note.
Yeah, I think to add on to that, I, all the maps should probably be looked at because some of them are really crisp and some of them are not, right? So if we're gonna update one and we can, then maybe we can do all of them.
Yeah.
Just to make them all match.
Yep.
I think they look good digitally, it's just when you print them. Yeah, that's why I said it might just be the format.
Yeah.
And then we've opened, then we update map fifteen as well with that safety path, with, with the safety pass priorities one through thirteen. Anything else on the open space, greenways, before we go to concept plans? All right, on pages seventy three through seventy six, these are, all right, concept plans. And we had, the Planning Commission had spent, I wanna say about four meetings on these.
Yeah, it's on there.
And really when we were looking at them, we were looking at, we've got input from the property owner, what they were looking to do. These are sites that would likely be developed in the next five to ten years. Also looked at some other sites when we went through this process. And these two were the two where decided that a concept plan made sense. And so, but what the Planning Commission had seen before always were drafts of the maps that are on page seventy four and seventy six. Then we also added text that call out the priorities for these areas that are illustrated on the maps but went into a little more detail about road paving, when those should be, if, and specifically for some that the paving needs to happen before you could implement this concept plan or certain utilities need to happen before you implement those. We wanted to make sure that these, number one, for the Planning Commissioners who were part of those conversations, that this reflects what your discussions and your understanding were. And then for folks who weren't part of those discussions but now are reading it, is it clear what the township's envisioning for these properties? And if someone brought a development proposal in front of you, do you think that you have good guidance?
I personally like these a lot.
I think as a new member, it really does help to understand visually where the developments and what they will be and what, what the plan or the vision is for the area. What would help me though is if they label, if the, in the maps, the, the roads were labeled.
Okay.
So it gives you a better sense of where I am in the township and the magnitude of the project or the content.
Yep. Would it help also to have like an inset map where it showed where it is in the overall?
Oh, yeah, that would be beneficial as well.
Okay. All right, and it's just Mr. Bailey and Mr. Turner. Did these reflect what you think the conversations were?
Yeah.
Okay.
No, I think it was a good job.
Well, those were our very specific questions about things that were new. But we also wanted to know what changes would be needed overall in terms of content or formatting? If you have small particularity things on formatting, I think we can take those offline. But if there are some big concepts, like I, I wasn't clear on this term and, and so those need to be clarified or I felt like this other layer of information could be added, things that you feel like would be beneficial to discuss with your colleagues, I would invite you to share those now.
So one overall thing I was looking for is, is we have this master plan. If it were completely executed, what would be the, the overall ratio of residential to business lands? What is our goal for this township?
Yeah, and I think that's illustrated on the future land use map, but I don't know that we have done that in terms of breaking it out by acreage.
I mean, I mean, it's kind of a vision, right? We wanna have so much business use and we wanna have so much residential use as we develop this community. What does that look like? You kinda have it in pictures, but what is that?
Yeah, and the.
Is it ninety, ten, is it eighty, twenty, you know, seventy, thirty?
Yeah, maybe it, like, there's some other stuff in there too, like mixed use and industrial and, right? So if we could see all of those blended into one map, I think it would be.
So it.
Visual, visually beneficial.
I mean, the future land use map on page sixty two, that's what that intent is, is that when it's all built out, this is what it would look like.
So, yeah, it's, it's a picture and it, and it's hard to interpret, right? Add some quantitative information to that, what does that mean?
So with like a, so a table that, for each of those that says it's this much acreage, it's this much percentage of the area?
Yeah, something like that.
Okay.
Either percentage or acreage, you know, we've, we've got, we've got ten million acres for business use and, and one acre for houses.
It's probably been. But, okay, yes.
But you see what I'm saying?
Yes, I see what you're saying.
Maybe something could be added to this table on page eighty seven. Because it talks about the land use categories, the associated zoning districts. And how much is in the associated zoning district?
Yeah. So that's a state law, that's a requirement by state law, that table. We could, I, I think what we could do is do a table as Mr. Wagner was talking about with those. I, I guess it's just a stylistic thing, whether that goes in the future land use chapter or whether that would go in the implementation chapter? or whether that would go in the implementation chapter?
I think implementation chapter seems to be to make more sense.
Okay, and maybe.
Because 'cause that represents the complete vision and and not so much just the future.
Okay, and then with some sort of mechanism to track.
Yeah.
So this is.
Yeah, where are we at, where are we at today?
This is what we have, this is what we wanna have, this is where we're short.
Here's where we're gonna be in five years, ten, you know, whatever, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Yep, we can do that.
Awesome. Any other questions?
Those were my questions. It's just um would just be interested, is there anything else that you felt that was missing?
Just do update page three.
Page three, the acknowledgements or no?
Oh, you, I see, it's just an acknowledgement, not and it doesn't represent the the current state, okay. Well, all right, so former, all right, that's fair. I get it now.
Yeah, there were a lot of.
You're fine, you're fine.
All right, well, is it?
I don't have any questions.
I'm sure I'll have more questions as I read through it a little more thoroughly. But yeah, you said Mateo's up here Tuesdays, Thursdays.
Yeah, if you could get things to him by next, you have written pages and things that
It's Friday.
you could get to him by next Thursday, which is the sixth of March.
Mm-hmm.
Um then that gives us more than enough, that that would give us a week to put things in and then we could give you a new copy printed out at your table when you have your next planning commission meeting. And that planning commission meeting is gonna be pretty, you you've got a number of public hearings that night. So it might be best to just, we'll give you a revised hard copy. You all can look at it and then look to have some sort of action item at your second meeting in March.
Oh, you know, I do have a question.
Sure.
If we go back to page twelve, objective seven, we talked to using opportunities to improve the road system within the township. Does the township actually have the ability to improve the road system?
You can influence the changes to the road system. So with new development, you can definitely look to improve the road system. For instance, if that levee property, the railroad concept plan, um you could look to have that, you know, you're requiring, you're saying that we want this road installed because that's gonna improve our street network. Um otherwise, you are in some ways at the mercy of
Exactly, that's what I saw.
the road commission and MDOT.
'Cause there are other instances within the document where you talk about widening roads and connecting roads that need to be connected. I'm thinking, I don't think we do that.
No, you don't do that, but you do meet with our COC every year.
Yeah.
Um they have more weight when they go to the federal government, when they go to the state, when they can point to a master plan that the community's had input on and say, these are needed. That helps you to get it on their tip or or on the schedule.
All right, so then my point is, this document reads like we do that, but we really can't do that. We we try to influence government agencies to so, you know, to do what we would like to do to support our growth, but we can't actually go out and do some of the stuff this it implies.
We can, we can do some of the things. In fact, we did things this year on some of the gravel roads.
Yeah.
We actually spent somewheres around three hundred thousand dollars and had roads gravelled with new gravel put on.
Yeah.
And we we had the money, we took it to the county and got their buy-in for them to do it.
Sure, okay.
But we paid for it, but from the township.
Can we widen roads? Can we connect them? Or what?
Well, I would add that I did read in here that it says that we can't do certain things with the roads, but
Yeah.
he did spell out or was spelled out in here about what she just described.
Was it?
And then this objective, as I'm reading it, is more or less kinda like what we were voting on last meeting, where we were all very concerned about the road and traffic patterns that were gonna be created by implementing that new development over there. And so I think really what this is reading is is more or less as a guide for this commission to be able to, you know, take that into account when we're approving uh different developments. So I I think it's good to leave it in, in my in my view.
I don't have a problem leaving it in, I just wonder if there should be some kind of a, you say there's a clarification in there or somewhere in the document?
Yeah, unfortunately I can't point to it here, but I do remember I was reading through it, it was it is spelled out in there.
'Cause I really, yeah.
Yeah, I think it's more in the background chapter.
Yeah.
It talks about traffic and who owns the roads and what their funding is and.
Yeah, transportation and traffic.
I just hate, I would just hate to give folks the wrong impression that we can do something where we actually can't.
And where we can do stuff with the roads, if you look, objective seven on page
Twelve.
twelve, you know, says that we as a committee here, township, we can minimize the traffic impact.
Yes.
So approving or not approving stuff to help mitigate stuff we can't control
Yeah.
would help. Okay. Any other questions?
No, no, thank you. But thank you all for putting some work, the work into this, um and we look forward to your continued input. As I said, I've spent a lot of time with this document over the past two or three weeks, pulling together this draft. And we use, we try to keep true to the two thousand nineteen structure. And it really does set up protecting your township and limiting growth to only certain areas. And it does a fine job of walking through the details of why. Um and so that's something I think that you've had in your master plan since two thousand ten. Um and so I I I think when this would be done, I'm surprised that it's never been nominated for an award and I think that might be worthwhile for the township to consider. Because you're looking to limit growth in a very strategic way based on um really unique aspects of your community.
No, when I read this document, it was a solid document, I was very impressed overall, so, I mean, really well done.
Yeah, I agree, and and I would add that the this draft over the last one's hugely improved from a understanding perspective, just the way that it's been formatted. 'Cause really in the pictures and things that have been added, it's really helped. So I think anybody reading it would probably concur with Mr. Wagner.
I I agree.
I agree.
You know, I mean, when I when I read through it, um obviously I was on the master plan, so I was surprised, really. 'Cause I mean, I I had a vision, but it wasn't on paper yet, so it's really awesome.
Well, thank you and thank CJ, 'cause he is the talented photographer who took the majority of the pictures in here and was kind enough to share them with us. Um and then Mateo has really helped to um write this along with all of you and along with all the planning commissions and township boards that came before. And another colleague of mine has done most of the formatting. I'm, I've only been the person helping to weave the spider web.
We appreciate it.
Well, thank you, and I'm sure I'll see you next month.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, moving on to number eleven, communication committee reports. Uh we don't have a economic development uh committee report. Um what about ordinance review committee?
Uh we have not met since the thirteenth of February. And we will meet the next time on the thirteenth of March at twelve noon.
Okay. And just a point of order for Susan. Um is it appropriate now to appoint Patty to the ordinance review? Or how does that have to go about?
Um, to your view.
If you're still interested.
It's it's not on the agenda.
Okay.
And so the only way you can amend your agenda at this point, 'cause you've already approved it, is if you had a full board and it was a unanimous vote.
Okay.
So you could um just send Cheryl an email, well, don't send it to Cheryl. Um send me an email.
Okay.
Because between Kelly and I and Mateo, we'll be doing your next agenda. And just remind us to put that on there to appoint Patty.
Okay.
Now, that doesn't mean that she can't go to the meeting.
To the thirteenth, okay.
Right, yeah, she could still go to the meeting, just make your official appointment that night.
Okay, does that work for you?
Okay. Yes, it works for me.
Okay.
And when did we meet?
Thirteenth.
Thirteenth at noon. And I won't be in attendance to that because that would be of four people.
Thirteenth of March at twelve o'clock.
Yeah, so if Patty's gonna be there, then.
And a small conference. Yeah, and I'll step away.
Okay.
Yeah, the small one.
A small one over here.
Through the door to the lobby.
Okay, okay.
And do you have a badge that'll let you in yet?
Yes.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, um number twelve, planning and engineering reports.
Great, um as I indicated before, um the next meeting on March thirteenth, you have a rezoning that's scheduled. It's um the northwest corner of Drainer um and Lepire Road. The proposal is to rezone it from Office to um C two. Also that night, there'll be public hearings for animal definition, for zoning ordinance amendments dealing with animal definitions, uh state licensed daycares, and then also um gas stations in I one and I two. And um whether they can have a associated retail store. Um currently, they cannot. The proposal is to allow them to do so in I one and I two. It's currently, they're allowed to have those, I believe, in C two. Um and ORC has talked about it. Um I, Mateo said that you guys had been brought up to date about it. Um but that this is a bit, uh it it's going through a different process um than usually with the ORC recommending it, um because it was brought by the township board to um for the planning commission to look at that. Did I sum that up correctly? Um and then there's been several pre-application meetings um in the past months. So we anticipate that you will have developments before you at your rezoning meetings.
All right, very nice. Well, thank you very much.
Welcome.
Um I guess the only thing left is a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.